...meeting of Gloucester County Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Steele, will you call the roll?
Mr. Gibson?
Here.
Dr. Orth?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Crisco?
Here.
Mr. Hedrick?
Here.
Mr. Bizani?
Here.
All present?
Will you all join, um, Mr. Ken Gibson with the invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for the beauty of your creation. We ask that you be with us tonight. Equip us with your wisdom and your guidance. Help us to, uh, speak and act in a spirit of service to this county. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I understand it's Mr. Wilmot's birthday today. If you want to join me in happy birthday.
It's once a year.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Ted. Happy birthday to you.
Alright. Should have cut my mic off.
Yeah, so all they heard was you.
We'll move to the citizen comment period. If any-
Were you intending?
No. I'll guarantee you that. If anyone, Mr. Mowery, if you'd like to come up and speak.
Ladies and Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, Mr. Steele, Mr. Wilmot, Howard Mowery, York District. This taxpayer still has a foggy mindset as to who is the boss. Yes, two S's, not one. Contrary to what may be taught, the saying, "We the people," goes back further than last week. Those who speak need to thank from, thank you from the public domain lest we forget who the people really are, commonly known as a taxpayer. The thinkers and managers of our net income in many cases lose sight of the capabilities financially of Gloucester County and where we may place in the state's structure of ranking. Do not take for granted that all numbers are correct, but the government and the private sector are constantly providing information that may have substance to our position here tonight, even though this is only the beginning of the next budget, taxing a long-term debt process that will be left to our youth and their children in the years to come. So we begin with boredom, something many could care less about. Tell me what you want, I will write a check. Many are less fortunate. Population controls the net income of the local government for development if they have adequate infrastructure to invite business outside of the surface or box store concept of growth and industry. So here we are, 2023, growth from 2010. Isle of Wight, thirty-nine thousand, growth twelve and a half. Tazwell, thirty-nine thousand, growth thirteen. Louisa, thirty-nine thousand, growth seventeen. Orange, thirty-seven thousand, growth ten. Gloucester, thirty-nine thousand, growth six and a half. These are the only counties that have comparables equal to Gloucester. But let's take a look at numbers one and two on what they really project as table one. Per capita personal income by county nineteen to twenty-one. Note, it may take researchers two years to provide the most current data. The government can be that far behind. Beak at your own records. Isle of Wight per capita averaged three to four thousand, along with all the other counties listed as before, uh, between the years twenty and twenty-one. The rankings in the state, Gloucester ranked thirty-nine on the first set. The percentage change in twenty-one was six point seven, and they ranked sixty-eight in the state overall. Numbers can be deceiving, possibly to the average individual, but most importantly in Gloucester, what can we afford in the current unsettled economy, daily, monthly, or for the next unknown two years? The solution is simple. The three most important departments, and they must be held sacred, sheriff, fire and rescue, and public utilities. All rest currently must take the backseat, so the saying goes. These three departments provide the glue to hold us together. Slightly amused, the citizen must suffer the mayhem if this board does not fully fund these folks. All other departments need heavy consideration for outsourcing, consolidation, or effective management review for trimming if necessary. As many are aware, the private sector looks at the bottom line for the shareholders. Have you ever known the government to reduce its size and cost that can be measured as a profit to the shareholders, the citizens, we the people? Cut all the modified potential projects except of numbers one and two. These funds should be shifted to the new firehouse. The original understanding was the old building would be sold or modified and not at the citizen's expense. Material costs are high and may be in short supply, but a good buyer can find and deliver the goods on time. I know, I was there decades ago. Long-term debt is not in the cards regardless of what your advertise may, your advisor may put on paper. The following needs your attention. School funding to be sent quarterly. Other contracted services, what and who by name and why can't the employees do this work? Uh, I'll leave the cola alone. Capital projects. No bus replacement. We just bought ten new ones on the cares program. Arc, the pickleball is the motivator. Then the users should be charged a fee to use. It's their cost to play, not all the citizens who don't. Beaver Dam Floating Dock, for what purpose? Where is it going to be moored? An item that can be reconsidered in better times. General fund revenue. I have never been able to find the fund balance cash in the treasurer's monthly financial report. Fishy, you think? Old Anfield, a figure of seven hundred thousand was mentioned at the last meeting. Provide the citizens with a report as to the problems that may be occurring at the prior dump. Is it a leaking? And how is the methane being controlled, burned, captured, or escaped into the atmosphere? Parks and Rec, due away with the Dabidil Festival. Red Heron, the government is not in the business of retail operations. Let the Main Street organization have it or somebody else. It has a history of being in the red at the taxpayers' expense. We will just collect the sales tax of four cents on the dollar and be happy. Clean community, fix the cost to permanent. It's a one-person show with volunteers no pay. Extension service, why the sudden jump? We don't need a market specialist. What will they do when there is no market to tap? Look at economic development. Still waiting at large five-hundred-employee shop making some product that can be produced for international sales, let alone statewide. No infrastructure, no business. The CA contingency, to balance the budget, get out the knives and cut your costs. You are the managers with the final say. I thank you for the time.
Mr. Brown? Alright. We'll close the citizen comment period. We'll move to the work session agenda. We'll start with, uh, Sheriff Warren, Gloucester County Sheriff's Office.
Says don't lean or touch, I'm staying away.
I think you can.
I can lean or touch? Alright, thanks. So I'm here tonight to, uh, certainly answer any questions you have, and I'll just start off by giving you an update on my staffing levels so you kind of know where we're at. We recently lost two, uh, very experienced dispatchers, one with eighteen-plus years of experience and another one with, I believe, just over four. Both left us to work on the new markets alert system with Community Services Board. We have two vacancies in the jail. Two recent candidates that just completed their polygraph test last week, so we're hopeful to get them in the next Basic Corrections Academy, which runs from May first to August fifteenth. At the end of the day, that puts us too short until close to the end of the year, by the time they finish their field training. Still have zero movement on the two vacant SRO positions. We're at full staff and patrol, however. Out of the twenty-eight positions we're allocated in uniform patrol, we have three in the Basic Academy now. They graduate mid-June. One out on maternity leave and two that were just involved in our recent officer-involved shooting. So out of twenty-eight, I'm six short. With the increasing amount of violent crime that we're dealing with lately, I say lately, over the past twenty-four months, we're in desperate need to add a criminal investigator to our staff. This will certainly be a top priority for us in next year's budget request. But when it's all said and done, I have to be able to fill a patrol officer's shoes that we would ultimately promote into investigations. Any questions regarding staffing?
Well, I do have a question for the chair.
Mr. Bizani?
So, last, last time we provided, you know, salary increases for your, and compression relief for your staff.
Correct.
Do you feel that that's enough?
No.
Are we losing, are we losing, you know, deputies because of competitive salaries from other locations? What would it take? Could you tell us what it would take to, to keep these good men and women in your force? What it would take in terms of the salary?
I, I'm glad you asked that, and I wish I had an answer for you, but quite honestly, I don't. I know that all the local law enforcement agencies are, are short-staffed. So we're all really competing for the same people. We're looking for somebody who's willing to make a move, that's already currently a law enforcement officer somewhere, willing to make a move. We're looking for, you know, someone getting out of the military, a college graduate, uh, anybody like that. I see that York, Pecoson Sheriff's Office, and James City PD just started offering signing bonuses. So York does a little bit of a tiered approach. So if you have six or less years of experience, they'll give you a three thousand dollar signing bonus. If you have six-plus years of experience, they'll give you a five thousand dollar sign-on bonus. And James City across the board is a five thousand dollar sign-on bonus. I can't give you a number, Mr. Bizani, to answer your question, but what I can tell you is that we can't just sit here and offer just under what everybody else is offering and hope that people are just going to start coming here, and that's where we're at currently. Our current starting salary is forty-nine, seven eighty-four, with a proposed starting salary of fifty-two, four eighty-two. With no signing bonus currently. Correct. James City is at today, we call it today, they're at fifty-two-two, with a post-academy of fifty-four, eight. State Police is at fifty-two, eight. Post-Academy, they're at fifty-seven, five. New Camp's at fifty-three thousand. York is at fifty thousand, four, and we really don't know what their number is going to be July one. We couldn't get that number before this evening. So, again, we're, we're under, just under everybody else with no sign-in bonus. And then even with the proposed increases, with the exception of York, which I don't have updated July first numbers on, it looks like we're going to be two hundred dollars above James City. But then Post-Academy, they're going to go twenty-four hundred bucks over us. This is our Post-Academy number of fifty-two, four. Just, uh, what, five hundred under New Camp, and then of course, you know, we're, we're still well under State Police. I, I don't know what it's going to take. I really don't.
Okay, so it's basically we're under average about four hundred dollars if we were to average that, absent any bonuses to Post-Academy training. Something like that, ballpark.
I guess if you exclude State Police.
I'm just, I'm just doing the math in my head.
Department of Corrections, uh, they've got a, I'll call it a lousy starting salary, so it's kind of offset, but they're offering a sign-in bonus for correctional officers of six thousand. But to me, it's not really comparing apples to apples because their starting salary is well under our starting salary for corrections.
So, gentlemen, people want to come to move to Gloucester, and they ought to feel like they're safe here. Uh, they've moved away from certain localities who have had a different opinion about police funding. We don't have that situation. The, the problem we have is we're not paying our sheriff deputies enough money to keep them here. So, um, I'm hoping that we can find a way to, to provide the sheriff, the good sheriff, the funding he needs to keep his force in place and to attract more people to come into the force and work here in Gloucester County. I am sure we can find some money somewhere. One of them is the HR, HR, uh, the HR market research person. There's a hundred and five thousand dollars there that can be used on a yearly basis to help the good sheriff with his personnel issues, and we want to talk about that later on this evening. Thank you.
So are you saying in addition to the seven percent more? Anything in addition to the seven percent?
He needs, he just, I'm sorry. He just told us that he needs, you know, like, a Post-Academy bonuses, which he does not provide. And, and in our budget, we don't provide that, Post-Academy, or at least in your budget, you don't provide that.
So we're, we're not offering any type of sign-on bonus currently. I ha, I haven't requested it. Because I don't know where that, you know, if that's going to put us where we need to be. Just to make sure we're not confusing the two, so a couple of agencies, and we used to do the same thing. Uh, we used to do a, I hire you at this, and then Post-Academy and field training, we take you to this. But we were so far under, I said, can we just go to where they're going to end up at Post-Academy? Which is where we're at now, but we're still under the others. And what, what a number of these agencies do, I say a number. So James City, uh, Newport News comes to mind, and State Police, they offer, here's what I'm going to hire you at, and then Post-Academy, I'm going to take you to this. I guess for the select few that flunk out of the academy. To me, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense because you're not going to save a lot of money in the, you know, what, six or eight months, in the salary difference that they're training in the academy and then their field training. I'm not losing people prior to them completing, you know, I'm knocking wood, I'm not having people flunk out of the academy. I'm not having people not complete their field training. So that's why I requested, hey, can we get this number to what our Post-Academy number is, which got us more competitive. We're still, you know, a little bit under our competitors.
That's baked in our budget then, right, Ms. Steele? What he's requested?
Yes, that, that program.
That was my question I was asking you, because right now, in the budget, we've got a seven percent increase. Were you looking at higher?
No, 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 I was looking to see if we had, ex, you know, he's not paying, you know, Post-Academy bonuses, but-
But I, that's where I was trying to get that, Mr. Warren.
I want to make sure that the sheriff is, is adequately staffed so that we don't have to make a phone call, says, where's the sheriff? Well, he'll, they'll be around when we get around to it, because I don't, I'm short-staffed.
So my understanding is the proposed increase is seven percent, but correct me if I'm wrong. The proposed market adjustment for each entry-level position is only three percent. Correct?
The scale, yes.
The scale. So that means my, to your question, my starting salary is not going up seven percent in this proposal. My starting salary is going up three percent in this proposal.
It's, it's more of a retention situation, so the people that are here are going to be getting a seven percent. The grade is only going up three percent. And you run into, if you raise the grade higher, then you may have other people who are saying, well, I've been here and this person just got here. And then some of the other localities, um, and I don't know that anybody's found an answer for it, but some of them are doing retention bonuses versus sign-on bonuses, or if they do a sign-on bonus, that's like it, you know, does have restrictions, so it's not just people job hopping. So it's, it, there's pros and cons on both sides.
Miss, is this part, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Crisco, and then I'll go back over here. Go ahead, Mr. Gibson.
Sheriff, so if I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly, with this additional budget, the entry-level salary would be fifty-two thousand, four eighty-two? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I, I take it, of course, that if we were able to provide money for signing bonuses, you would, you would welcome that as a recruitment tool?
Certainly.
And so my question is for Mr. Wilmot, would, I believe we have fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funds. Would that be permissible, permissible use of ARPA funds to use as signing bonus money for the sheriff's department?
I, I believe so. I'd like to double-check, but I believe so, yes.
That's a good question.
Okay. And, and could, with some flexibility, could that be applied to those SRO positions to try to fill those two remaining slots?
Sure.
Okay.
Dr. Orth?
That was a good question, Mr. Gibson, Ken, since we're in a workstation. Given that question, and if we can use ARPA funds, is there a drop-dead date for the use of those last remaining ARPA funds? Because if we want to use them for bonuses, and we just use, let's say, half of it, and then all of a sudden we're at that time period where we can't use it, then we're stuck. So, Mr. Wilmot, maybe you can help us understand if there is an intent on using the remainder, I think it's fifty thousand, correct?
Yes.
Uh, I believe it's still the same as the other date, uh, which is the end of twenty-four. It has to be pledged and spent by twenty-six.
Twenty, okay. Well, that, we have some time, but then we'd have to really think about beyond that time period. Um, the other question I had is, so if someone hires a person, let's say, and they go into the academy, so you're paying them, right, while they're in the academy, right, the salary? You mentioned something about flunking out. If they don't pass, what happens to that person?
So, with the bonus?
No, just for that salary.
They're unemployed.
They're unemployed.
Yes.
So, but you're paying somebody six months, hoping that they're going to pass the academy.
Typically, the most challenging part of the academies are the first several weeks. So the likelihood of someone flunking out late is super slim.
Okay.
Typically, when people fall out of the academy, it's going to be early on. I think the, there's, we have three in there now. I think they've lost twenty. But again, I, I'm, I'm going to stick to my guns. I'm not going to lower my standards to get people here.
Right.
And I think that's what you're seeing in other agencies, and that's why you're having a higher flunk rate. I say flunk. I think several of them quit.
Yeah. Do we see people coming from out of state where they're being paid less to come into Virginia, where pay may be higher? That is, you know, other states that might pay significantly, well-
I haven't seen that.
Mr. Crisco?
Thank you, sir. Um, you may not have the answer to these two questions, Sheriff, and that, that'll be fine, but on average, how many new hires do you typically have in a year? And you, you can get these answers. You don't have to think about it, and that's fine. Um, and then the other question I have is, how many of our deputies currently are at our base salary? And those two questions, you can, you can get us the answers to. I don't expect you to have that number in your head or with you tonight.
I'm going to say probably we gave a, a pay increase last July. So for every, anybody who's still at base would be someone that we've hired post-July. I, I mean, I know I've got-
Is Ms. Johnson your HR person?
Yeah, I'm ju, I'm just sitting here thinking. I, I, I know we just, we've got three in the academy now, so you have to include those three. I've got two that are, are hopefully going to join our staff in corrections in May. There's five. One just graduated, uh, Corrections Academy two weeks ago, that's six. It's got to be ten or less.
And it would be the deputy one position?
Right. Well, I'm thinking-
Because we brought everybody in January up, so.
It's got to be ten or less, because you're, you're talking about-
Yeah, I was just wanting that, just for baseline, because if we look at changing what we're going to do, you know, with these folks looking with their increase of three percent for their step, and then we start offering bonuses for the next group that we're going to hire, then I could see our, these folks that have been here six months, eight months, will all of a sudden fall underneath the people that we hire with the bonus. So just trying to figure out what it would take to get us, where the people that have been here six to eight months, when our next group of hirees come in, that, you know, we're not, we're not stepping on toes, just, just looking at it.
Are we proposing three or seven? My understanding is we're proposing a seven percent increase for current employees.
Right.
Okay.
Right, for the current employees, correct.
Okay.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Sheriff. Uh, your SROs, once you hire an SRO, how long does it take to get them up and running in the schools?
So you've got a four-and-a-half-month academy, and then a minimum of two months of field training, a minimum. Now, these positions that we're looking for are grant-funded positions.
Correct.
And DCJS is requiring two years, a minimum of two years, law enforcement experience to place them into that.
Right.
So I have one young man currently on staff slated to go into a grant-funded position when his time is met. But I don't have anybody else currently on staff that wants to do that. So short of me getting somebody from the outside.
So is the, the pay the same as the road position?
Yes, it is. It's a law enforcement position.
Law enforcement position, so the pay's the same?
Correct.
Thank you.
Sheriff Warren, does, uh, military police count? No.
They don't count?
Because they're not a Virginia-certified law enforcement officer.
And it doesn't even help with time and nothing?
You know, I, I find that odd. I mean, you know, these, these young men and women are out there defending our country. They know how to use a weapon. They, they underst, especially if they were military police and had a job as a military police officer. Surely they know how to conduct law enforcement, prob, you know, probably as well as anybody else can. And, and we can't do that because of Virginia law?
It's, it's all part of Department of Criminal Justice Services. They still have to go through, I don't care if you've been a military police officer for twenty-plus years, you still have to go through a basic Virginia law enforcement police academy to get certified under Virginia laws. You know, I, I don't know what the MPs are taught. You know, there's a lot of, as far as the legal, you know, elements of crime, et cetera, uh, that I don't know if the MPs get. I would imagine they have some, but-
Can you advertise for military off, military police, and then once they accept the position, stand up to the academy and get trained? Is that, is that the training that's required?
We, we can, but, but we're still in the same boat. They have to be a DCJS-certified law enforcement officer for twenty-four-
Two years.
For that grant.
Okay.
For the grant. Our non-grant-funded positions, we can do it. And we've moved to we can move at this point.
Dr. Orth?
You, you mentioned something that, um, you've seen in the last twenty-four months, an increase in crimes and stuff like that. How, how are your staff holding up to that, in particular, you in particular, having to deal with a lot of the administrative burden? Um, how is that affecting the morale and in particular- How is that affecting the morale, and in particular, you having to deal with that personally?
I think the biggest hit for us, because we're have, we're dealing with more complex crimes, uh, more violent crimes, it's been a real strain on our investigative team, primarily. We looked at calls for service overall. Crime overall. If you look at the overall picture, our calls for service have actually decreased a little bit. Our overall crime has actually decreased a little bit. But with patrol dealing with, and I know we've we've talked about this a lot, but with patrol dealing with our mental health issues, a person suffering from a mental health crisis, it's just a more extended time on a call. So that puts a bigger strain on the other deputies, because this person's tied up at the hospital until we can get somebody called in to, it's a it's a broken cycle.
Yeah. So when I go to the gym in the morning early and I see two police cars at the emergency room, I'm assuming that is a situation that your staff had to respond to and bring a person to the emergency room that is related to some crime, correct?
Typically, at the hospital, that's for someone suffering from a mental health crisis. And we are sitting with that person and waiting hours, days, and sometimes it's been weeks. We had one we sat with over a hundred hours, a hundred hours.
That is correct.
So if you think the mental health system is broken, a hundred hours.
So what happens? I mean, what, what do you do with that person? I mean?
You you sit there with them and.
And they're in the hospital?
I mean, I hate to say it, but but you're essentially babysitting them. That that's what you're doing.
And you're at the hospital the whole time?
We're at the hospital the entire time. We have to maintain custody of them.
Ties up assets.
We have to maintain custody of them. And it's just a game, these these, uh, mental health facilities, they they cherry pick who they want to take as patients. And, uh, you know, unfortunately, law enforcement is stuck de- dealing with it.
Mr. Bizani.
You indicated, Sheriff, that you needed an additional investigator. What would an investigator's starting salary would be, you think?
So it's, it it wouldn't be hiring an investigator off the street.
Okay.
It would be, it would be hiring a patrol deputy, because someone with a couple of, few years of of law enforcement experience would be the one that would promote into investigations. And then that ultimate vacancy would trickle down to an entry level law enforcement position.
Is that baked into your budget?
It's not.
It's not?
It's next year.
I was trying to minimize my ask.
Okay.
We need an investigator.
We do need an investigator?
Yeah. And and
So what will be the incremental?
I don't need to tell you, we've had a lot happen since
I know.
our initial budget request was.
So what's, what would be the, what would be the incremental of elevating a current deputy to the position of of investigator? How much, what would be the increment?
So I I wouldn't have the fringes in front of me, but our proposed starting salary July one is forty-two four.
For an investigator?
No. To backfill
Okay, to backfill.
that investigator that would be promoted. So you you have a current deputy on staff, he or she would promote into investigations, ultimately creating a vacancy
Vacancy, yeah.
entry level.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, am I gonna have people kicking the door down to get that job? I don't, I don't know, you know, I, but, um, for SROs right now, I'm not.
And that would be plus whatever sup- or whatever increase it would be for the investigator?
Correct.
Where do you envision the investigator being paid? Roughly?
You know, it just depends on where they're coming in the scale. I mean, but it would only be the difference between where they're getting paid now and the increase, and we're talking about five percent typically for that pay increase, I believe. And and oftentimes, let me, let me correct myself, oftentimes, if we have somebody with some seniority, if they are a senior deputy or above, it's actually a lateral transfer. And that's what we've seen the last few times that we've promoted somebody to investigations. It was somebody that had several years of experience, which is the ideal candidate.
Dr. Worth.
So you have your staff based on eight-hour shifts, correct, or twelve-hour shifts?
Patrol, corrections, and dispatch are twelve-hour shifts.
Twelve hours, okay. And how many people are on each shift?
So we have.
And there are their patrol cars, correct, some of those people?
What's that?
Some of those people are in their patrol cars during those shifts?
When we're at full staff, we have twenty-eight. We have four shifts of seven. And they are, yes, they're all in patrol car.
Okay.
Then we have our our K nine deputy who's with us tonight, and he has his own vehicle.
And given, let's say, an emergency, and you have to pull people from other shifts, those are paid overtime, correct?
That's correct. Sometimes it's a comp time issue, but typically, when we call somebody out, we try to pay them overtime.
Mr. Smith.
Sheriff, if you also, if you have an inmate that's admitted to the hospital, you also have to provide an officer, in some cases, two.
Around the clock.
Around the clock.
Yes, sir. Have to maintain custody.
And that ties you up.
Have to maintain custody.
Mr. Gibson.
Mr. Chair, um, and I think what we're hearing is, this is more of a comment, but, uh, you know, with with the unfortunate move to defund the police around the country, the disrespect that officers are facing, there's a depleted officer pool, because people are leaving law enforcement because of these pressures, and unfortunately, Sheriff Warren is facing that here. We've got recruitment problems. I can't think of a better use for the remaining fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funds than to apply it for bonuses to be used at the sheriff's discretion to try to recruit and fill these remaining positions. So contingent upon Mr. Wilmot approving the appropriate use under ARPA, I would make that motion.
Do you need a motion consensus?
Motion.
Motion. He's already made the motion.
Second, I'll second.
Any, okay. Did you have any comments about it?
No.
Okay. We've got, do you have one comment about, about this?
About what we just?
The motion.
And I, I'll, I'll be in second, but I wanna make this ju- just so we we know that going forward, that we're gonna have to look at making sure we have money for this each and every year, too. Okay. Because every time we hire new, we're gonna have to have money left. Once we deplete this fifty thousand, we're gonna have to have money in a future budget cycle somewhere to pay these bonuses when these people come on board.
And that's.
I mean, that's a small amount, just.
Uh, well, may I, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
I understand the desire, once you fund something employee-related, such as bonuses, to to continue it in a, going forward. But I don't think you should feel bound. You have this limited source of funds in ARPA, that once they're depleted and gone, that you don't have them anymore. And it's not like a salary where you've hired someone and and you're basically obligated to yearly pay their salary. The funding source could be limited to just this fifty thousand, understanding you have a desire to continue it in the future. Contingent on the availability of funding for that. So I don't think you should be necessarily wed to the obligation of continuing a fifty K per year salary, I mean, bonus for the sheriff. Does that make sense?
Sheriff Warren, I know they're already hired, but if, a caveat to this, if there's anything you could do for the current ones in the academy, some ti- some type of stipend or something to help them, I know you're looking at a bonus for the future ones, but maybe when they've complete their first year or whatever else.
I mean, we
Whatever you.
Just hear me out. If we're looking at a seven percent pay increase July one, they're gonna get a seven percent pay raise, a month after they get out of the academy. I mean, I like to think they're not going anywhere.
Okay.
You know, the signing bonuses is a I've talked to my staff a lot about it. Well, you know, I don't know if it's fair. So I'm like, well, tell me what you want me to do. Do you, do you want me to try to get a sign-on bonus and get you some help here? Or do you wanna worry about what's fair? I know fifteen years ago, when you were hired, we didn't give you a sign-on bonus, but do you wanna continue working short, or you wanna, you know, and, that's a good point. I don't think anybody currently on staff is gonna be griping. I think they recognize that the big picture is to get our staffing levels up, it's less work on everybody.
Fair enough.
But I appreciate you asking that.
And I think you have to really recognize the mental component to this, because if these people are running ragged, and some of the things that have been said regarding people just sitting there and not being able to do their their duty, it's tough on them and their families.
Right.
In particular, because these people do have families, and we need to be considerate of those. I mean, we wanna keep the people that we have here, here, and in the best shape they can possibly be, both mentally and physically. And I'm sure that, you know, with all the news of things that have happened across the country, it's gotta be tough with some of the things that have happened, the shootings and everything. You know, I'm sure that's something that weighs very heavily on you, and of course, we've talked about here, the school security issues, uh, and what we need to do. And you're saying that we're having an issue trying to get SROs, um, just because, again, the problem, the shortage. So, uh, it's unfortunate, these are the times that we have to deal with security. You can never know who's gonna be the next school.
Mr. Bizani.
So this is an uninformed, I'm gonna ask, perhaps Mr. Smith might know better, or you might know. Do we have a psychiatric section in at Walter Reed where they're handling psych cases? No, we do not have. So we don't have, I'm not gonna ask the question. Thank you.
All right, we, we, Mr. Hedrick.
Ju- just a pointed clarification, the motion that's on the floor, we're sure we can use the ARPA money for that?
I understood the motion to be contingent on its eligibility.
Okay, thank you.
And I als- also assume that it's not necessarily it's fifty thousand, it's the remaining ARPA, ARPA funds, which is estimated to be fifty thousand. Is that correct? So it could be forty-nine? Could be fifty-one? But I wouldn't want you to say fifty if you only have forty-nine.
It should be fifty on the second payment that we're expecting to come in from the state.
Then fifty.
All right, we have a motion and a second in reference to fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funds for bonuses. Miss Steele, will you pull the board?
Dr. Worth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Hedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, is there any more questions for Sheriff Warren?
Thank you, thank you.
I do have a posit- I do have a positive note, believe it or not. So our office has been allocated two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand in grant money. So we have, I've been working with Miss Steele on reducing our FY twenty-four ask. And if if approved, we're still waiting on approval, we're still trying to tweak some things, we should be able to reduce our ask by forty-eight-four this year. Some other things we're getting is is, uh, our tactical team vest and helmets are expiring next year, so we've earmarked that, that'll save about thirty thousand. And some some various other tools that we're we're looking at getting that won't affect, uh, our budget next year. Anyway, we're trying to be physically responsible, it's just
But let's not, yeah. Let's not shortchange you and your staff on things that you need for, you know, being safe in situations that arise as they increase in frequency. You know, we certainly wanna make sure that you don't lose officers, you know, to any unfortunate accident.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
One thing, the, uh, the second ARPA money. Don't mess this up, George.
It is. I'm having to take this one for for our finance lady. Uh, the ARPA money is due by the end of two thousand twenty-three, so December twenty-three. So if you're appropriating money right now for bonuses, that money's not available.
I want to check that it's twenty-three or twenty-four in the year.
The bonuses, that for this year, FY twenty-three, because that money's not available to December.
We don't have one.
It could be as late as December. It's not here now. So if you're trying to do bonuses now, this money's projected.
Well, do you have anybody in the pipe for hiring?
Just the two that I already mentioned, which sounds like they're gonna come on board. They're not waiting for me to give them a sign-on. I'm trying to get that SRO, it's really what I'd like to do.
Okay. So it's more than likely it'll be for next year?
The, there, the treasury is very clear on your guidance, but right now, if they, the only guidance we have is sometime, we received one portion that we just appropriated last year. And then the second payment is due before the end of calendar year twenty twenty-three.
Which gives you six months of this upcoming budget.
And future? Use the mic so people at home can hear you. No, they've got movable legs.
George, not so much.
Yeah. Okay. Nobody said you were coming up, I said you were last. No. Oh, the next item is public utilities, Mr. Dawson.
I don't know where they are tonight. You know, I, we have so many items to cover, I really don't wanna go through this line-by-line discussion, so I'd like to explore where your questions are, if that's at all, at all possible. I mean, if you want some general comments, I'm gonna say I am very concerned about this upcoming budget. If you notice, we have an increased reliance on general fund balance in order to balance revenue and expenditures. I know it goes down from from twenty-three to twenty-four, but it it does concern me that this is the first two years since two thousand eighteen, that we've had to go into something other than our our revenue in order to to balance the budget. So i- it's a trend that frightens me, and I really we've counted on growth in the past, and, you know, this, for this month, or for the month of March, we had no applications for service, for new service, and I'm afraid that's a trend right now, and, because we really don't have any major developments out there ready to start building uh, until the reserve at Gloucester Village starts to build homes. So this scares me.
Does anybody have any questions about utilities, the budget for Mr. Dawson? Go ahead, Dr. Worth.
Given that I'm on the utilities committee and tries to attend and also understand your needs, you know, obviously, in front of us is the, a request to purchase AMIs to put into place, you know, as soon as possible. Perhaps you can explore, or at least tell the board, the importance of these AMIs and what they mean for your staff.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Worth. AMI, which of course stands for advanced metering infrastructure, is a a whole new paradigm shift in, you know, how we go about interacting with our customers. Whereas today, we manually go out and read the meters. Customers do not have a portal through which they can access their account information. You know, if if we, we don't follow up with any electronic notification to them to remind them that, you know, the due date for their bills is coming due, it's kind of pertinent, because today we were mailing out disconnect notices to everybody, and we had a glitch. And the 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 service that provides, you know, that does that for us, uh, basically crashed. And so we were scrambling to get those disconnect notices out, because that's telling somebody you need to pay your bill before the fifteenth of the month, or we will come along shortly afterwards and we will turn your service off if you don't pay your bill. So this whole, you know, this paradigm shift in how we will interact with our customers will be of great assistance to us. It will also give us the opportunity to sense what is going on in the water distribution system, because these meters will be able to tell us the the customer flow never goes to zero. And for a single-family residence, which is what the majority of our customers are, the flow frequently goes to zero during the day. So that tells us there's a leak behind our our meter on the customer premises. It allows us to alert the customer to begin looking for that leak within twenty-four hours of the meter starting, rather than waiting until the next billing cycle to tell them that, hey, you know, you lost ten thousand gallons of water, or fifty thousand gallons of water. I- if the customer, you know, gets concerned about paying their bill, and and they wanna know what their balance is, you know, you get that that scary thought at three o'clock in the morning, gosh, did I remember to pay that bill, and you have to wait for our office to open at eight o'clock to call us. Once AMI is fully in place, you can go to your computer, you go to your cell phone, your laptop, whatever, access your your account information and confirm whether you did or did not pay the bill and then act appropriately. access your, your account information and confirm whether you did or did not pay the bill and then act appropriately. You can set up alerts if you're going out of town and you want to know that something failed. The washing machine hose broke or something that is going to cause you to have a high bill. You, you know, this, you can set this alert up that if your, your consumption goes over a certain amount, send you a tech message. So it, it's all. And, and of course, we will also be going to e-billing and, and in expand the opportunities for e-payment as well in cooperation with the treasury's office. So like I said, it's a whole paradigm shift in how we will interact with our customers.
Talk about the relevance for your staff.
Well, we spend, we currently, you know, take all of our line maintenance group, which is only six people. And for a week, they do nothing but read meters. So if you have a leak, you know, if there is a leak reported to us, we have to decide whether it's important enough to stop meter reading and probably end up estimating at least one route for that, that billing cycle in order to fix the leak. Or do we wait until meter reading is over and, and fix the leak?
And you have to, you have to attend to those leaks that are pretty serious. You can't let them go like someone knocking over hydrant on.
Well, yes, someone knocking over hydrant and shutting down the water service to a portion of Main Street, that is correct, or any highway, that, that is correct. We, if it's a, a leak that endangers life or property, yes, we have to respond to it. Even if it does mean that we have to, to estimate, you know, one or more meter reading cycles. The problem you run into with estimating a meter reading cycle is if you estimated that route last month and you estimate it again this month, now you're running a real risk that on that third month, you're going to end up with, you have overbilled the customer and you will, you know, you will end up with owing them money rather than you, them owing you money. So you, you will have a credit. One of the advantages too of, of AMI is it's going to include replacing our old meters. That's something that every vendor we've talked to has, has said that, you know, that's the key to enhancing our revenue. Because it will allow us to accurately capture what the customers are really using. And that's a twofold thing. One is, you know, we will get the revenue because, you know, it's cost us to produce that water. And if we're not collecting it when the customer uses it, then, you know, we are losing money. If we do collect it, then it helps us cover the cost of treating that water and, and transmitting it to the customer. But it also gives the customer the opportunity to look at their real consumption and say, you know, maybe I don't need to be doing this, or maybe I don't need to be doing something else. And I have an example, I happened to be speaking to a customer the other day and it was very opportunistic because customer service had just come to me and shown me the list of meters that have been reading zero for several months. And for this customer, their meter had not registered consumption for eighteen months. Prior to that, they were using as much as five thousand gallons of water a month. But when the meter stops, they get that minimum charge of two thousand gallons a month for twenty dollars and eighteen cents. So I was able to alert the customer that they were going to have their meter replaced very soon. That if the, when they see the usage jump up, don't be, don't be scared, don't think you have a massive leak and panic. It's because we've now gone back to accurately recording, you know, what your real usage is.
Yeah, the sad part about this is the amount of water that's being treated and lost and unaccounted for. It's a very significant percentage of our water. So having these AMIs will help us, I would assume, lower that, that number. I think we're at what, twenty-five percent of treated water is unaccounted for?
Twenty-eight percent. I mean, we have some peaks that get up into the, the low thirties, but on an annual average basis, it's been running about twenty-eight percent. Now that's, you have to understand too, we don't meter fire usage.
Right.
So, you know, when the fire department needs to, to fight a fire, that water is, is not measured in any way, shape, or form. Even if a sprinkler system inside of a building were to be activated by a fire, there is no meter on that fire service line. So that's, that's a given that you're going to have whatever percentage that works out to. But nationwide, well-managed utilities, well-maintained utilities, say that ten to fifteen percent non-metered, non-revenue water is a, is a good number. So we're almost double that number.
The other is, and just to give you an example, because I'm on the utilities committee. A couple of weeks ago, there was an issue behind the Gazette Journal for both sewage and water. And what looked like a very simple solution turned out to be the use of, what, four hundred and fifty man-hours over a three-day period trying to fix a very simple water line in the sewage line. And I spent what, probably the better of four hours watching these guys, because I was very interested in, you know, what they were trying to do. And it's amazing how bad our infrastructure is. It's, it's pretty bad. And trying to remove that water line that was behind the Gazette Journal to the nurtry took them probably the better part of it, removing a, what, twenty-foot water line. Because every time they tried to solve a particular issue, another problem rose up. And this was seven people working what, three and a half days?
Yes.
For a very small area. So think about what we've got as infrastructure in this entire county. By having these AMIs, it frees up a lot of the people to do the basic maintenance that is really necessary.
I mean, AMI won't help us with that leak at George Washington Highway and Burley Road. And that's something we're going to have to contract out or, you know, any other, you know, major leak. But it will help us do all of those smaller jobs in, in a more timely manner. Because we won't have to make that decision of, do we fix a leak, do we unstop the sewer, or do we read meters?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. Mr. Dawson, how many meter readers do you have?
We have, we have six. We don't have dedicated meter reading positions. All of our line maintenance staff are involved in meter reading, everyone from the foreman down to, to the last person that we hired.
Okay. The reason why I ask is because for public, I, I know the answer, but public-wise, if they hear you saying you're installing all this technology where you don't have to go out to read meters anymore, what are you going to do with people that's reading the meters, employees? They, I'm sure you have stuff for them to do, but public, I'm just asking for the public.
The health department, every time they, the health department inspects our water plant and our water distribution system, one of their comments is, you, you really should be exercising your fire hydrants on an annual basis. We have seven, over seven hundred fire hydrants in our system all, already. In the last year, we've, we've managed to touch somewhere between four hundred and fifty and four hundred and seventy-five of those hydrants. But not all of them. Another one of their comments is you should be exercising your valves every, you know, every year so that you know that the valves operate. So that when you need, you know where they are, you know you can get a valve key on them, and so, and you know that they work. We have probably, you know, over a thousand valves in our, in our, our system. We have touched maybe two fifty in the last year. So for us to do that, that's on a four-year cycle for us to get to those. And we really do need to do that. We need to flush the water system on a regular basis in order to maintain water quality in areas that have low usage. Do I, a phone message note appeared on my desk this morning and it's a, it's a person that we talk to two or three times a year about discolored water because of low usage on that line. You know, we only respond to customer complaints for flushing a water system. We don't do a proactive program, which we really should be doing. The, the MOM plan that we agreed to under the consent order, that's maintenance, operations, and management, says that we will inspect a portion, I don't remember the exact portion of our collection system every year. And again, we only react to the problems. We don't proactively clean anything. That sewer truck that we're, that is going to be delivered by the middle of April, I mean, it is done, it's on the distributor's yard. They are taking it out for a shakedown cruise. And once they're done with that and they fix anything that comes out of that, they will deliver it to us. They've promised it to us by the, by the middle of April. That will help us because we've, we haven't been able to do any proactive cleaning since the last sewer truck died. That will help us.
And the other is that, and some of these meters that have been not looked at, I can tell you that when I went with a crew to install some of the, was it the ride-by meters?
Yes.
Some of those were just packed full of dirt and it was almost impossible to get to the valve to change them. So there's, there's a lot of general maintenance work that lies at, given, if you look at the CIP for the utilities, what, it was three pages long of things that are necessary just to keep the program operational.
Well, the break that you, you mentioned on Main Street last week. We were fortunate that when that vehicle struck the fire hydrant, which has, you know, it's been there for years. I, I think the, the as-built plans for that water line are dated nineteen seventy. So that, that line's been in the ground for, you know, for over fifty years. That fire hydrant is in a ditch, so it is all exposed. I mean, the vehicle bumper hit below the breakaway line. So the breakaway line became the pipe between the hydrant and the valve. Thankfully, that was asbestos cement pipe. It broke. If not, it would have probably broken the main in, in Main Street. And we would have had a, a much larger problem to deal with. But that's, you know, the age of, of that pipe. Those, you know, that's one of our, our targets is to get rid of asbestos cement pipe, which is fifteen percent of our water distribution system.
Mr. Dawson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Mr. Dawson, for your presentation. Am I correct in hearing, and I think this is what I heard on the tour, but the entire Department of Public Utilities staff is six people and yourself, is that it?
No, we are twenty-seven people.
Okay, all right, so how could you possibly?
No, we, we have eleven folks at the water treatment plant. We have eight operators, a plant manager, and two maintenance staff. We have six folks in our line maintenance group. We have one vacancy in that group that we're trying to fill. We have three people in our sewer pump stations. And then we have the three, we have one admin assistant, two folks in customer service, and engineering super, a utility supervisor, utility inspector, an assistant utility engineer, and myself.
How many does that total?
I think twenty-seven, I believe is that number? Yeah, about twenty-seven.
You're not quite the miracle worker, I was saying.
No, we, we can't multiply.
But that's still a lot to cover.
Yeah, we, we don't multiply lows and fishes, I can tell you that.
So, so last year, your staff, countywide, there was a pay raise or cost of living adjustment of approximately five, five point five percent, I believe. Did that help with morale and retention?
It has certainly helped with, with retention, yes. We have, you know, the, the, we have, right now, we have one retirement coming up at the end of June. One of our senior, one of our lead operators at the water plant is going to retire. We have that one. But we've, we've not had a significant number of vacancies, you know, people that have left and we've had to try to fill vacancies in this past year.
And I take it it would be important to continue with cost of living adjustments in that range, the five percent range, to help you retain these employees?
If, since we are competing with everyone else in the Hampton Roads area for staff and our, our particular need is water treatment plant operators. Because we have just enough operators to provide the staffing that's required by the, the health department. So when someone takes time off, someone has to work overtime. So you'll probably notice in our budget that our, our request for overtime has gone down. But it's gone down to the minimum that we think we need to cover the water plant for people to take vacation. That if they don't take it, they're going to lose time. So that's, you know, that's where we are with that staff. So yes, the five percent, you know, is going to help greatly towards staff retention. I mean, we, it's not going to prevent the retirements. I, you know, there's no way that we can stop that. But it's, it is going to help us deal with the folks. I mean, two years ago, we lost three people to James City County in, like, that. So if we can, you know, reduce those kind of, of losses, it's a great.
Yes, there's that sign at the, across, yeah, that says, we need you.
Mr. Hedrick.
Yes, listening to all, all of the issues that we have in the utilities area. The pump stations, we addressed one of those, I think it was number eleven sometime ago, with some of the ARPA funding. I think we talked about pump station thirteen?
Yes, sir.
That needs work. And we were, did we discuss the, the deep well that you need?
Yes, sir.
And then we add in all these multiple problems that we have with the water and sewer lines. It would be very beneficial to the board, certainly myself, if there were some kind of a comprehensive study done where the utilities department could come back to us and say, these are the problems. This is what it'll take to fix them. This is how much money we estimated it'll cost. And give us a overview of the real problem. All I hear is problems, 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 and I know you guys have got them. So I would like to help you as much as I can because I see this as just as high a priority as anything in the county.
All right, sir, we did a good bit of what you've asked him for in the update, update to the Water and Sewer Master Plan that the board approved in two thousand nineteen, but I'll be happy to send you a copy. I don't believe you were on the board at that time. So I will, I will get all the board members a, a copy of, of that document. And there is a significant listing in there of the water and sewer projects. As well as, you know, be happy to share with you a summary of what the sewer evaluation studies that were done in response to the consent order identified in the, in the need for both the collection system and the sewer pump stations.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, Stu.
Yes, sir. We have committed that within the next three months, we're going to be giving an update to the board on utilities. And it's not only going to be looking at all the, the problems, but it's also going to be looking at the growth and how that impacts studies that have already been done. And really making sure our priorities are straight to, Mr. Baines and I have set up, we're gonna have like routine meetings with Mr. Dawson and others, because if we don't set them up, we're not gonna make that three-month deadline. But we want to do that and have it sort of be off-budget cycle. So we have time to, to respond. And then that's also, you never know, it might play into some additional grant funds or infrastructure money if we're better prepared for it.
And we just sent our assistant utility engineer to, through a grant funding program, a grant writing program last week. So she is itching to get started on that.
And we, and we have capacity for growth in the reservoir, correct? I think that was mentioned on our tour.
Yes, sir.
We've got quite a bit of capacity.
The safe field of the reservoir is four million gallons per day. And between the two, the surface water and the RO plant, we have, we have capacity to treat up to four million gallons a day. The limiting factor on the RO plant is that we only have one well, we're at this point.
How's our, what's the integrity of the dam?
The area of dam is great.
I just had to mention. But you gotta, you still gotta take those trees out.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
I mean, that's on your consent order, right?
Uh, no, no, that, well, that's on the, the renew, the, one of the conditions for the renewal of the, the permit issued by the Department of Conservation and Recreation for the dam and the reservoir, yes.
When does that come up?
Well, we're in the process of, of renewing it right now. We, the last step that we just took was we submitted the flood inundation study that was prepared by our consultant to DCR for their review and comment. And of course, we're also getting ready to, and very soon, we will be advertising for the modifications to the outfall from the reservoir that's required by another permit issued by the state through the Department of Environmental Quality. That's the Virginia Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit, which they want us to expand our ability to release water downstream, anticipating that there will be a time when we will not have water going over the top of the principal spillway tower, which there is water going over the top of the tower eighty-five percent of the time historically. But they're anticipating, you know, that, that drought year when we're going to have to open the, the release valve more in order to, to meet those downstream requirements. And the goal there is dilution of the elevated chlorides in the concentrate from the RO plant so that we maintain the downstream ecosystem.
Mr. Bizani.
Just, just a quick question about RO plants. Usually I understand most RO plants are used for desalination. Is this plant the same kind of plant where it can actually desalinate water?
It does.
It does desalinate.
It, it takes brachy- It takes, you know, it takes brackish groundwater from the lower, the upper middle and lower Potomac aquifers, which comes out with chloride levels of about fifteen hundred parts per million and gets those chloride levels down to drinking water levels, which are in, you know, very low double digits.
So, you just, you just can't merely pump out that water and drink it, then?
No, you sure can. You would not swallow it, no. I mean, it's almost like drinking seawater. Fifteen hundred parts per million of chloride, that's not ocean water, but it's, it's very brackish.
Mr. Crisco?
Thank you, sir. At the beginning, Mr. Dawson, you mentioned that you've been making budget allocations to maintain operations, changing your budget. How much money are we looking at each year when you're reallocating in the budgets to make operations continuous?
In the past, we've been able to transfer, I was trying to remember what we did to put money over into the fund balance. And it's been, you know, a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars in that range. Since, since we paid off that first bond issue in two thousand eighteen, and that eliminated the need for there to be money to come over from the general fund to the utilities fund. And utilities fund became completely self-sufficient at that point. And when you consider the fact that we were also paying the money back to the county to reimburse them for the services that they provide to the enterprise fund of about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Now, that means that, that revenue was, you know, in the pushing that three hundred thousand dollar range with revenues in excess of expenditures without that transfer back to the general fund. But we're looking at things, at increases. An example is we were advertising to replace the membranes in the second skid in the RO plant. And you do this on, you evaluate the bids on a lifecycle cost basis. Two of the costs that go into that are power and the anti-scalum that's fed to the feedwater going to the plant. In two thousand eighteen, we used a power cost of seven cents a kilowatt hour. That's nine cents now. We used a cost of a dollar and a quarter per pound for the anti-scale, and that's two dollars now. So, the chemical went up sixty percent. And that's a pretty good representation of what the chemicals across the board used at that plant have done. When we can get them. You know, a year ago, we were in a crisis where no one in near hauling distance was making hypochlorite. So, we were really sweating that one out. Recently, the major producer of a chemical that we use to remove the iron and manganese from the raw water, their plant burnt down. I mean, they're the largest producer of this, of this chemical in the country. Thankfully, when we buy it, we buy it in several pallet loads. So, we have about, we had about a nine-month supply on hand at that time. So, we should be able to ride that supply chain problem out for that chemical. But we haven't been so lucky for others.
Any more questions from Mr. Dawson?
I'd just make a comment because I know that you all have been asking. We did receive, Mr. Dawson's aware, we did receive our unsolicited proposal today. And so, Ms. Cronin was helping me go back through the procedural thing. So, there'll be a committee that's assigned to review it internally before we bring it to the board. So, it has come through. And big box of stuff, so it's going to be a little bit to read through, but we're working on it.
On a positive note, several months ago, about a year ago now, I guess, we brought the plant manager here and the both senior operators, the lead operators from the plant here before you to, for recognition because of they, they had received awards two consecutive years for plant operations. Last week, the plant manager went to the CERCAP meeting in Roanoke to receive a similar award for two thousand twenty-two. And once we get the text regarding that award, we will be issuing a public service announcement regarding the plant staff receiving that award.
Very good. Any more questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Dawson.
Thank you.
Safe travels. Next item, Ms. Katie Legg, Parks and Rec and Tourism.
Good evening. So, in the interest of time, what I will do is just to go through each of our budget units and hit any highlights, any major changes or decreases, unless anyone wants to start with any questions. Clean Community, that is a division under Park Operations, that is one part-time employee. This is partially state-funded. This is a non-competitive grant that we receive from DEQ. That dollar amount, we estimate because we don't actually know until we get the check in the mail, basically. We've seen it as low as six thousand dollars, I think this current fiscal year, it was about twelve. So, no major changes in that department. That budget just funds that part-time employee and some minor programming supplies. Daffodil Festival is over. The Daffodil Festival is an enterprise fund. So, by its nature, our plan is for it to break even or turn a profit. FY twenty twenty and FY twenty-one were definitely negative years. And that stemmed from us holding over some, some revenue that we had received in FY twenty that we thought we would have a festival in FY twenty-one, and then we did not. And so, we had to refund that money in a different fiscal year. And so, our revenue was negative in those two fiscal years. FY twenty-two, our revenue was about sixteen thousand dollars. And this year, we are on track for about fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars. But all of those final figures aren't in yet. No major changes to this budget either. It does fund one part-time work is required festival coordinator who manages most of our sponsorships. For the first time ever, we managed to bring in thirty thousand dollars in sponsorships for this year's festival, which is quite a feat. But otherwise, no other, other changes to that budget. Parks and Recreation, so this funds the recreation aspect of the division. This is where the administrative staff is funded out of. This is all of the classes, the sports, that sort of thing. The only, the biggest changes here is there was a move. We had a full-time administrative assistant that we shared with Clean, not Clean, with Community Engagement and Public Information. That position has shifted fully over to Community Engagement and Public Information. So, there was a reduction in our personnel costs. Otherwise, there were not a lot of changes. One big one was in FMRR. That is just because that gets allocated after the fiscal year begins. But Parks and Recreation, I don't believe, has any major requests coming. This has funded replacement soccer goals, things like that. Park Operations, this has been a little bit of shifting around just to help us track our expenses better. One of our biggest, or our biggest line item outside of personnel was maintenance supplies. And this included everything from mulch to grass seed to field paint, vandalism repairs, just kind of everything. So, in next, actually, I think this fiscal year, we've created an agricultural supply line item. So, that, that maintenance supply has been split. So, if you see a reduction in maintenance supplies, there's now an increase in agricultural supplies. The work is required line item, that increase is due to the increase in hourly salary that was approved that started in January. I wish I could say that that had solved our problems. Park Operations has about ten park aides on the list right now. About five of them are consistent workers. We have some that, you know, they work one weekend a month because that's what they want to do and they love the parks. And we take them because that is one month, one weekend out of the month that someone else doesn't have to work. As we move into our summer months, we are still understaffed. Work is required hours, we look at about eighty-four hundred to eighty-five hundred hours a year. So, we don't have an actual number of employees that we aim for because it really just depends on what their schedule looks like. But then, of course, as we move into the summer months, so starting in May, our parks will be open. A shift from when staff gets there to when staff leaves is about sixteen and a half hours. So, that is a lot of time to cover. And the last one is tourism. Again, no major changes. What we did include in FY twenty-four was a line item for grants. We know that the Virginia Tourism Corporation will continue to put out grants, and we anticipate applying for them as often as we can. The great thing about a lot of their grants is that they're leveraged grants. So, they allow us to use our existing marketing and advertising budget in order to match whatever grant funding they're giving us. This fiscal year so far, we have received a five thousand dollar grant, and we are waiting to hear back on a twenty thousand dollar grant. And it didn't cost us anything extra because we were able to just utilize what's already in our budget. But it allows us to take on some better marketing opportunities that maybe we couldn't have afforded otherwise. For the first time, I think, ever, we were in the Virginia Travel Guide this year, which is very expensive to do, but we were able to do it because of this grant. And so, the next grant that we're waiting on, we're hopeful that we can do that again. Tourism includes a full-time museums coordinator and a full-time tourism coordinator, as well as a part-time visitor services coordinator. Otherwise, there are no major changes to that budget as well. So, if anybody has any questions?
Ms. Legg, on Park Operations?
Yes.
What are we leasing or renting?
Portable toilets. So, that is portable toilets at Woodville mostly. It is, we do a portable toilet at Kappa Hossick Boat Landing, at some of the other parks, depending on the time of year. We aim to have the restrooms open versus renting them, but sometimes that's just not possible. And actually, we've had a couple of issues with our grinder pumps, so we've just had to bring in the portable units.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Legg about Parks and Rec?
Oh, Ms. Legg, what is the status of the renovations at Woodville Park?
Yes, so that is out to bid right now. They are due back on Thursday. So, we've already had our pre-bid meeting, that was a few weeks ago. The question period has closed for contractors, and that addendum has been posted. So, at our pre-bid meeting, we had seven or so contractors come out. There seems to be a lot of interest in it, so we're hoping that the bids come in. A little bit later start than we had planned, working with engineering and the A and E firm and just trying to get all of that hammered out. But whether permitting, we should still hopefully be able to play in the fall.
And then I see in the budget two pickleball courts at Ark Park. Are you hearing from pickleball players and is, we're hearing from them?
Almost every day.
Okay.
So, the project at Ark Park is actually to demolish the existing outdoor basketball court. It is not any specific regulation size, and it's in really bad shape. And to put in its place, a high school regulation basketball court that will also have two pickleball courts painted on top. So, Ark Park has a portion of that fee, of that cost is dedicated from funds that were given from the Fair Association to Park Partners when they donated the property. And then when Park Partners disbanded, they donated that, that money to the county. So, about sixty thousand dollars is held in a fund specific for Ark Park. So, this project, about half of it would be covered by that fund.
Mr. Smith?
One question. Did you say you were doing the basketball court with the pickleball court drawings on the basketball court?
Correct.
How do you think that's going to work out? If I want to play basketball and then somebody else want to play pickleball?
So, what a lot of places do is they set posted times for play. And that is something that our park staff will have to retrain themselves when they are going throughout our parks, whether it's opening, closing, or just visiting and maintenance. And so, that's what I expect to have happen, is specific times for basketball, specific times for pickleball. If you get there and no one's there, do whatever. But if you're playing pickleball and it's a basketball time and someone shows up, the expectation is that they vacate.
Okay.
How hard is it to move the nets? How hard is it to move the nets?
It's not hard at all. A lot of players actually have their own sets that they will bring because it's actually pretty common that they're taking courts that already exist and adding pickleball lines on top. So, that's not a deterrent.
Dr. Ward? Yeah, regarding the Daffodil Festival and cost, you mentioned that you were pleased to get thirty thousand dollars in sponsorship. So, how does that, how did that affect the balance? You know, because you said you were in the red for previous years. This put you into the black considerably?
Oh, yeah. So, I expect our net profit this year to be between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars. There are certain costs associated with the festival that we just can't get out of. You know, there is a cost to rent a stage that size. You know, there is a cost to the portable toilets that we have to bring in for fifteen thousand people. We use county contracts when we have them. We certainly call for estimates and quotes, but there are some things that the costs of those are just rising. So, our, we're looking to be more creative with, with our revenue. Debbie Wyselowski is our festival coordinator, and she hit the ground running hard this year, and she has no problem asking any company for money, which is how she was so successful this year.
What about vendors? I mean, is there a abundance of vendors that apply to come here or do you have to turn people away?
We do turn people away. So, this year, with the construction in the court circle having been completed about two weeks before the festival, we were able to add an additional sixty to seventy vendors. We used every spot of sidewalk space that we could because now all of our sidewalks connect, there's no dead end. And so, that meant that there, there were vendors behind the debtor's prison. There were vendors going out that side of the court circle because you could get out. And all of those vendors pay a fee, of course, to come in. I think we turned away forty to fifty this year. And out of the ones that we selected, I would say maybe seventy percent of them are returners. This, it's a well-sought-after event.
Questions, comments from Ms. Legg?
Beaver Dam, I'm assuming that's a pretty well-used park by fishermen, correct?
Yes, so that floating pier, that floating dock, the average lifespan of one of those is twenty to twenty-three-ish years old. This one's twenty-two. It's time for it to be replaced. It's becoming close to a safety issue. If it does not get replaced, it will just have to come down.
Is leaking?
Not yet. There are places where it probably would not be long before it starts taking on water. So, yes, so the capital project here would, you know, it goes out after the gangway, it goes out sixty feet, and then it right turns another fifty, fifty-two feet. So, this project would replace that, but also extend it out another thirty feet, making it a lot more usable.
What kind of shape is the pier at the point?
It's busy.
I know it's busy.
I actually have just been talking to park staff about getting in touch with the building official to just go ahead and have an inspection done again. You know, when our staff are out there once or twice a day, they're walking it because they're emptying all the trash cans out there. There don't seem to be any structural issues from up top. There don't seem to be any structural issues from up top, but it's time for us to do a good inspection of it.
Mr. Edger?
Yeah, yes, Kay. Too bad you had to cancel the parade. I did hear there were a lot of turnaways in the parade. It was, is there some limitation on the number of entries?
There is, and that's mostly due to space. We use Main Street Center to get everything in line. There's actually a lot involved to putting a parade down the street. People think you just kind of show up and off you go. And it sounds like that's what you would do. But no, there is a lot to it. We do safety checks beforehand, make sure that, you know, taillights are operating, that the appropriate people are operating vehicles, that nothing's going to fly off. And so the folks that want to put in a truck and a trailer, we have to account for the space for all of that and then getting them in order so that when the emcee is ready to announce them, that they actually go down the street in order. So there is a limit. The Daffodil Festival Parade has a limit of 45 floats, I believe. The Christmas and Holiday Parade goes a little bit higher, but not by many, maybe 50.
So is it first come, first served?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so anytime we put that out, we advertise it as the deadline is this day or until we're full. Yeah, we don't typically reject people. It's not like the vendors where we pick and choose. No, this is first come, first served.
Any more questions? Thank you, Ms. Legg.
Thanks.
Your battery's going dead. Okay, we'll move into budget discussion. Where would we like to start here?
Well, you have Elaine is here.
Well, I figured we were going to bring that up into that because it wasn't on part of the agenda.
That's just to say, as far as the budget discussion, the only thing I have to share was the fact that she's here and information and then also beyond what we've been talking about. So I wanted to remind everybody that we are still working on the carryover funds for the capital budget. So when you see the final, we don't want to have to go into having the budget re-advertised again for the amount. So just keep in mind, these are planned amounts that are being added to the budget that are not being spent this year that will be carried over. So finance is working on that and you'll have that latest version. We didn't want to bring up a different display tonight because we thought it would just be better to keep everything exactly as you had it last week, but we do need to make those additional carryovers.
Okay, Dr. Ward?
Yeah, one thing I was hoping, and I don't want to add a bunch of extra work, but you know, I'd asked at a last meeting, the amount of money that we get from sales tax that is forecast for our budget and what we get at the end of the year. And we know we usually get a little bit more based on what we're seeing in the numbers, correct? We always get more, even though we are conservative in our estimates. So would it be possible to set up a graphic that would have each year the budget for what we have for each of the three major, like there's meals, hotel, and sales tax? And have a graph that shows was projected and actual. So you can see the difference and see if that, especially before COVID hit because a lot of things happened during the COVID crisis that might change the dynamics and that. But it might be good for those three major items to see how close we come to what was budgeted and what we actually got at the end of the year. It might help us fine-tune that portion that would give us a little bit more latitude because it seems like we always get always a little bit more. Now this year, it's always hard because things change every year. But you know, again, Gloucester is in a unique position in our area where you get a lot of people, Matthews and Middlesex, you know, coming here to shop. I mean, every time we go to Fox Mill Run, it's packed in the middle of the day.
Well, I think we can definitely do that. And I would mention that back years ago when we were, people were submitting budgets to me and I'd say, you can't have it both ways where you anticipate spending a whole lot, but you're nervous about the revenue side, you know? And so in this case, we're kind of flipping things because the revenues were projected a little bit lower and they were growing. And as Ms. Bybee mentioned last week, that she's pushing it as far as she can. So you know, we're going to get real closer, you know? You never want to go above what your revenue is. So we'll do those, but I just would hope that the board would understand, yes, you have COVID impact and then we've had growth that has changed.
Right.
So we really haven't hit like our settled area that's kind of starting to hit now where we have all these businesses, we are the hub that we've wanted to become and COVID is over with. But we increased our anticipated sales tax.
It would just be good to see how those graphics come along towards the end of the year. I mean, if there's always a little bit of difference, it says that you're underestimating, you know, our revenue. But then again, you don't want to take that chance and underestimate for the one year that it happens. But it'd be good to see that, the moving part that we have, just as something that adds to the portfolio of past data that helps the board understand future direction.
Absolutely. I think that would be very helpful to keep maintaining. I did it for lodging for years. But I think there's been a number of comments about how we don't know what the economy is going to do. We're trying to be really cautious. So I would say keep that same caution when you all look at this. If you want to increase the sales tax to be able to balance the budget, we got to be, you know, careful in that.
And I'm not saying that we're going to do that, but it's good to have the data to be able to see where those lines go with each other, you know, for each of these three major items, which is significant for us.
Right.
Mr. Breslin?
So one of the largest businesses that are now, will come online is the Land and Coats Building, where they're now using a rented facility and now they're putting a facility that they own. Have you figured in the revenues from sales, potential sales from the new building and new equipment that they're going to be selling, including real estate tax and all the other things that go along with that new building that's going up? Has that been baked into your revenue projections?
Not specifically Land and Coats.
Okay, and why not? Have you looked at their revenues from their old store and projected perhaps, you know, the sales tax revenues from the old store?
No.
Yeah, that's private. You can't ask that.
Yeah, that's private stuff.
Yeah, but your business licenses will have their revenue projections in there.
But then, you know, we're just moving from one facility to another. So their sales may not increase that much by moving to a new facility, but it's something that we'd have to, we can't really get that data because that's private.
But the real estate will change. I mean, they've got a new building. They're not renting anymore. They're putting a new building they own.
Oh, I know.
So you've got real estate tax associated with that, maybe some machinery and tool tax associated with that. Has that been baked into your budget, the potential from the new building and the new facility there?
We could ask the assessor what, how that might impact the budget per se.
And there is an anticipated growth. So every year, whether it's new homes or new businesses, there is an anticipated growth. And hopefully, the facility that they're leaving is going to be right. And you know, it sounded like there was some good news on that maybe coming. And so that it would be truly an increase, not a swapping with a little bit.
All right, I guess the elephant in the room. Ms. Johnson, you'll come up?
She's been called an elephant?
I didn't call her an elephant. I said this whole issue.
Good evening, everyone.
I'm smart enough not to call a lady an elephant.
So thank you for having me back and I'm here to answer any of your questions. I did want to answer one question that was given to me when I was here last time. And it was from, I believe, Mr. Bazani and then Mr. Crisco asked if I had researched what the right ratio is, personnel ratio for compared to the employment staffing of the county. I did go out and do some research over the last couple of weeks and I've got from Bloomberg, Watson Wyatt, Deloitte, and the Society of Human Resources. They basically said it's averaging 1.5 to 1.58 FTE for every 100 employees for HR. For payroll, it's 1 FTE for every 250 employees.
And just to remind you, again, Mr. Chair, we have about 400 employees.
We're averaging 400 a month. So my calculation is it would be a little over six employees for HR and one and a half employees for payroll, which would give us about eight employees.
You're at six now, correct?
We're at six now. And that's with the worker comp safety specialist position. So we actually have five that do the HR payroll. I'm here to answer any questions.
Mr. Gibson?
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for being here. In recalling your initial presentation about the need for this additional employee, I think one of the reasons you mentioned was succession planning. Can you kind of give us some more thoughts about why that would be important for your department?
Sure, and it wasn't just succession planning from my department, but for the county. We know by our demographics, we have a transition that's going to occur. And one of the things to prepare us for that transition is to identify those individuals within our organization that could move up as we see people transition. Right now, we don't have the resource to go to each department and look at the skills to see what qualifications we need, what we can help develop. It's all about that compensation reclassification, looking at that position, what do we need and what will we need in the future? We don't have a crystal ball that can say exactly, but we can take and look at what we're doing, what the position's doing and what others are doing and try to compare where we need to be. So it's not just for my department, but it's throughout the county because we know, based on our demographics, we do have a transition that's going to happen within the next five to 10 years. For my department right now, there is a lot of individuals that love doing human resources within my department, but they're very specific that they like. For me, it has to be a broader brush. It has to be somebody who can handle the compensation, the reclassification, and be able to be trained more on the negotiation skills of benefits, you know, medical, dental, as well as dealing with the employee relations side of things. A lot of my staff is tactical, but I need somebody who can have a broader brush so that when I transition, you know, you're in a better position and Ms. Steele is in a better position as well.
So five to 10 years, right? That's what you just said.
That's an elephant in the room too, huh?
I've got one other question.
Mr. Gibson?
All right, so we have, so I'm on our board who are not as interested in adding this position. I can understand their position. They're pointing out some potential cost savings and so I hear what they're having to say. When I'm debating the two viewpoints, one of the things that's coming to mind for me is an in-house position is going to have potentially a greater knowledge of the county workforce, a greater knowledge of the market area, whereas a potential weakness for a consultant would be they're kind of parachuting in without that knowledge. Is that accurate? Or do you feel like a consultant could come in and do the same type of work that the person you're proposing for this position? I mean, how would you compare the two, getting the work that you need to get done?
They're both accurate, but in two different ways. So a consultant can come in and they can take our job descriptions. They can take our salary ranges and our pay scales and they can do comparisons on them. But on what you're saying is being able to do the job shadowing, being able to see what that position really does. I could be called an administrative assistant and do this. And actually, the administrative assistant that is being compared is only doing this. So really, even when you have a consultant come in to do a compensation study, they are working directly with human resources and working with that knowledge to really try to understand the position. The thing is, is when you have a consultant come in, they don't look at all the positions. They do, just like I was talking about doing, they do a pool of positions and then, you know, review them. So both are correct. What they're saying about how a compensation study would happen, as well as what you're saying. The difference is, is this position isn't going to just be doing it at a set time every year. It's going to be doing it all through the year. I, just a couple of weeks ago, I had to stop what I was doing and do a reclassification compensation analysis for, to basically keep an individual here. You're not going to have that with a consultant. You have to have somebody here that understands the market and understands if somebody's coming in with an offer, if that offer is feasible and how we can match it. And do we want to match it? Is it a reasonable offer? You know, we haven't done that a lot, but we're having to start looking at those things. We have very valued employees that we don't want to lose. So they come in, well, I've got this job over here and they're going to give me this. So we have to stop and look, is that appropriate? Can we do that? How does that, how does that balance our compensation? Is it going to cause compression? So that's a day-to-day thing as well.
None of your staff can do that study instead of yourself?
No, they, if I'm in a situation, like in a meeting, like if I'm doing an investigation, they can go out and contact my colleagues and get data that I can look at, but they don't do the analysis of the data.
Mr. Edger?
Yes, Elaine, if we were to fill this position, presuming that it's going to free up a lot of your time to do other things, could you go into some description about the other things that you could offer and that would help the county?
Sure. My goal, which I talked about last time, is number one, looking at our policies and personnel policies and some of the administrative policies that deal with personnel to make sure they're up to date, to make sure that they're understandable. There's been several investigations that I've done where we've really had to look at the verbiage and how it's laid out because it wasn't clear. In one section, it would say this, another section, it would say that, so they were conflicting. That would be primary. Secondary is looking at how we can become more efficient. One of the things I would love to see in my, in the HR department is reducing all of the manual data entry that we're doing. That's looking at our systems, looking at our processes, looking at what we can put in place, right? The other thing is, is doing the succession planning, working with the departments. What are your needs? Looking at if we're restructuring, reorganizing, what does that mean and how would we do that? And lastly, one of the big things that employees want right now is they want to know that there is movement for them within an organization. I would like to start building career ladders so that there is a progression that somebody could make, as well as creating training and development. What skill sets do we need? How can we bring that in-house? Our leadership training was a huge success. All we're getting now is I'd like to have more. Can I get more? I want to be a supervisor. That would fall on me, helping not only do the training, but identify those within the county that could provide the training. So there's a lot of different things. My role should be to help you move into the future, not just to stay where we're at right now. And that's what I'm hoping.
Mr. Crisco?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know you mentioned that there's no one here that can currently do this. Has anyone been offered to receive the requisite training to be able to perform this task for you?
Yes.
And they've all said no?
Yes. They all have said they are not interested.
But if we were to get on, the next question is, if we were to get on a schedule of bringing in a consultant every three years, wouldn't that in turn free you up from the larger compensation program? Not the one where you have to work at trying to save an employee, you know, based on, hey?
Sure, sure.
But wouldn't that, if we got on a schedule where we're bringing in a consultant every other year, every three years, wouldn't that then in turn? other year, every three years, wouldn't that then in turn free you up to do some of the other policy and procedure stuff you're looking at doing?
Not maybe 20, 30%. And, and the reason why I'm saying that as well is because during the budget process, my role in the budget process starts the beginning of November. From the beginning of November, where we get the department's requests, the personnel requests, I have to start compiling, looking, costing out, through even today. We were doing costing, you know, last Friday. So from November until April, my focus is budget. Having a second person can also help with that focus, so, so I don't have such a very short period of time to be able to do the other things that help the organization.
Dr. Orme.
Thanks. You mentioned about the career ladders. So I'm assuming that at each rung, those position descriptions have to be very, very well delineated, correct?
Yes.
And so for someone who starts out, they need to be able to look at each one of those rungs to see if, what they need to get up another rung.
To the next one.
So is, are one of the issues that we now have a problem with position descriptions for those rungs?
Some are position descriptions, some are that the rungs don't exist. So in certain areas, we do have career ladders. We have career ladders in utilities for our water treatment plant operators, but those are actually specific to that type of job. We have some for building inspectors. We are now getting them for the, in the environmental areas, but there's others that we do not have. So we're looking at what can we do to provide them.
I only ask that because before I retired, whenever I wanted to take a staff member of my staff that would be from a lab technician to a lab specialist, we had to justify, you know, that what they were doing now and what they're going to do in the future is very, very different. And the HR person I know we had was really tough. I mean, that person looked at every single item and demanded that, you know, is that person really going to be doing, doing this job? Especially as you move from what we were doing, lab technician, lab specialist, to marine scientist. You know, a lot of times, we gave our lab specialist duties that a marine scientist would do. So we have to be really careful because the person would say, well, that person's already doing that job. But I do know that, you know, trying to give people the opportunity to move to new positions, which, you know, everyone wants to do that, they want to take on responsibilities, they'd like to learn, it gets really hard to make sure that that position description is very well delineated for each one of those duties.
Yes.
And I would assume that's a complicated issue given the number of people that you have in your, in, in any, any department.
It, it is, depending on the position and depending on where we can gather the information as well. A lot of this, you know, we don't pull it out of the air. We try to be consistent. The other area that, two years, right before the pandemic, or three years ago now, many of you probably heard that Department of Labor was looking at the Fair Labor Standard Act and looking at the classifications of non-exempt and exempt and change. That is going to come again, is what I'm hearing. Everybody's saying it's happening, which means we would have to go through all of our positions and analyze them to see if we have the FLE, say, you know, intact. So all of these things are things that aren't day-to-day, but they come out and you have to, you know, use staff time for that.
Yeah, I remember, remember that occurred when I was working, and it was really complicated because we had people right on the border of that. And knowing that if they went to the next level, then their ability for comp or overtime was basically cut.
Yes.
And so that was a tough one.
And it could be the reverse, where you have your, your exempt staff that is changing to non-exempt, and then that impacts your budget because then they have hourly and overtime and, and compensatory time. So it has both sides of the fence, and that will happen again because it's been a long time since it's been looked at. But that, I'm being told that is going to come up again.
That will create big issues for you.
Well, and it was going to be for. Any other questions?
Mr. Gibson.
In talking about a consultant, how, if, if we went the route of a consultant, how long would the consultant be in the county working out of a normal year, based on your experience?
Usually a week.
One week.
They would come one week to do one-on-one interviews, meet with departments, meet with some staffing, then they would take all their data. HR would provide them their classification scales, the pay scales, and they would go back and do, you know, their analysis. There'd be dialogue while they're doing their analysis, and, and then they would present a report. But onsite, looking to see what we do, it's usually, it would be usually a week.
And then the duration of their entire work, both onsite and offsite, what would that typically be?
It could be, you know, I, it's been a while, but up to a month, you know, six, I'd say four to eight weeks, depending. It also depends on what you're asking for them to do.
And the number that's been thrown about is $75,000. Do, do you have any hard data of what these consultants are charging currently in other localities?
I think Ms. Steele has talked to a couple counties and cities.
Yeah, I don't have, their prices, I can definitely get that, but I think what was just mentioned is really important. And thinking back to, I've been through a couple of them while I've been here in my tenure, and a number of years ago, we had them come in and help us rewrite our entire job descriptions because of the ADA. And that was like a whole focus. And right now, from what Elaine is telling us, in the trending of things, we're going from five-page job descriptions back to one page. You know, there's always movement in this. So I think it really depends on, are they just looking at, are, are the jobs in line with the region? Or is it an internal review issue to make sure there's, you know, the, the placement's correct and all that, as well as the outside marketing? Or are there things like job career ladders and job descriptions? So I, I, I do think the time on, onsite is absolutely correct. We've never had them here more than a week that I can remember. But sometimes it would go on for a period of a couple of months, back and forth, and we all had, the last time, too, we had questionnaires that we had to turn in and very lengthy ones. So something, you know, my guess is in that 75 to 150, but I can definitely check around. I know New Kent just is finishing up, they just had phase two of theirs. And that's another common thing, is it's like one year and then the next year. Part of that is whether their recommendation is just so much that a board can't handle at all, that they split it, and then the consultant company can kind of say, well, these are the priority areas, and this would be the second.
The other thing I did want to clarify on, when I said a third of the positions, it wasn't that we were going to pick just a third of the positions and a third of, we would look at what is actually happening that year. So if we were having major turnover in certain positions, those, that would be a position that we would put in the pool to assess. So it would be based on what is actually occurring in the market, in our position, our turnover rate. Those positions would also be looked at. So it wouldn't always be just a set standard. If we knew we were running into an issue, we would look at those, just like when we worked with the sheriff in Jan, you know, when I did in the fall, working with him about what can we do on these positions.
Dr. Orme.
Again, maybe you can confirm or not confirm my sense of what's happening in the job market, in that the COVID issue has really changed the dynamics of how people either stay in a job or look for new jobs. And I think it's gotten much more complicated because, number one, there aren't a lot of people in the jobs that we advertise. We're always short, and that seems to be true in a lot of places, but that a lot of people are looking for a job that, you know, provides monetary satisfaction. And I think it's just gotten much more complicated because of the fact that people are moving from job to job and hoping to get a better salary and, you know, better working conditions.
That, that is. And actually, today, I heard a statistic where, which I thought was really interesting. In most individuals' lifetime now, they'll have 12 careers. And five to six used to be, you know, probably about eight years ago, they said five to six career ladder, career changes. Now they're saying 12. So that, that goes to your point of things are different. The, the, the workforce that is here now, they want if you valued, they, it's not just what can I do for you, it's what are you going to do for me? What, how are you going to grow me? How are you going to pay me? And what are you going to do to give me the work-life balance? And those, those are the things, and, you know, private industry has done this very well, shifted and, and maneuvered. Public sector, and, you know, we have a set criteria of how we do our job and what's expected because, you know, it is public dollars. Trying to find a nice blend to meet that need is going to be critical in the next couple of years.
So trying to keep the people we have is really crucial at present, given that there are so few candidates. I mean, we heard that for a number of positions, how few people apply for jobs now, which is unfortunate, and in particular in the utilities. For example, looking for an engineer that you guys need is impossible. I mean, we hear of that from the other county administrators, how difficult it is to just find people in those positions. So where are they? Are they going to where? I don't know.
Many of them are going to private sector because they can pay the top dollars. Engineers critical, utilities is critical, but there are private industries that are paying top dollars for them as soon as they're, come out of college.
So there's got to be another way of offering a job here that has benefits that private industry does not offer. And that's, that's the tough.
That, that's, that's a plus. And just like in engineering, what, what I did is I went out and looked. I actually went out and looked at all the ads and who was recruiting, and that's when, working with Mr. Baines, we came up with, how about if we do an engineer in training? Somebody who is getting their engineer degree can be an engineer in training. We can develop them into the engineer because we were not getting any applicant pool for engineering.
Mr. Crisco.
Yeah, Ms. Johnson, earlier you mentioned the number of FTEs per payroll and HR services. Did you look at, did you research at all the number of employees companies should have before they brought in their own compensation analysis?
No, the, the formulas don't have that. They just have formulas on how to figure the FTE and what you should look and what your, what your average is. They gave the variables for the formula was technology. You know, if, if you have more technology, your variable would be lower than less technology. So there are different variables, but that was not one of the variables for the formulas.
Mr. Rizan. Ms. Johnson, I have a question for you. How often do we lose employees to other localities over a dollar amount, and then we have to hire somebody for a higher dollar amount than what somebody left for?
Number-wise, I couldn't give you, but quite often. Quite often, they resign for a better position, better pay.
But then, how often do we have to pay the new employee that fills their slot more than what we were paying them before they left?
So it depends on how long the person was here. If it was somebody who was here three years or so, we, we may be able to break even on that from what they were making. But if it's somebody who had been here 15, 20 years, we, we'll, we'll probably save some. It just depends on their, their tenure and, and the salary we're paying. The higher positions, such as like the buyer position, the, looking at the experience and what the qualifications are, we may pay more for that.
Mr. Rizan.
So I was looking at the email Mr. Crisco sent to everybody. We all saw it. And it, it showed like an $825,000 savings over 10 years. But if you also look at amortizing the, the salaries at, let's say, 5%, a COLA increase of 5% each year for 10 years, if you run the numbers, it shows a $1.3 million savings over 10 years. I'm still, I'm still torn, I'm still conflicted with the value of, of hiring a full-time person for 10 years, at a 10-year cost versus just hiring consultants three or four times a year, and the benefit to the taxpayer that would mean as far as, as far as, because it's really, it's, it's HR that's just internal to the county, and it's not really helping the citizens any other than that they have to pay for the cost of your organization. That's about the way it works.
Yeah, I, I agree. But it, it does help the citizens if we help you hire quality employees that keep the customer satisfaction.
True. But it's, it's more the, it's more the former. So I'm just, I'm just of opinion that we should probably not, not do this, but that's, that's.
I was going to get to that for a budget discussion period. I just.
Okay, we'll, we'll do that.
And I would, can I make one last statement?
You can make all you want.
So I understand, and, and I do respect everybody's opinion, and I understand about consulting and the dollars. I understand that the budget is tight. One thing I would not want is that the 5% COLA goes off of the table because of this position. I would rather have all of our employees get a 5% increase and us continue down the road as we are right now than have this position be the reason why we drop down a lower COLA. I, I just feel that's not appropriate, and I would not feel good as a person doing that.
No, I wasn't.
I respect that point of view, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you.
I wasn't implying that we would not, we would not make the COLA. I'm just saying that it was just.
No, I understand, but I just wanted to make that point because I know there is a discussion about the COLA and, and the difference of the $105,000 in balance budget, and I just would not want that position to be the reason why employees lost a percent of COLA.
And I appreciate your honesty because that's exactly what I'm struggling with, is how important the raises are to employees, you know, to keep them, because we, we need people. And we're short-staffed in a lot of places. And again, you know, knowing what I know of utilities and watching those four hours, those seven people working the way they did, and what took a lot of time. And it was really interesting to watch the dynamics of those seven people working together. It was, it was interesting and fun. And I'm hoping they weren't doing that just because I was there. But there, there are a really dedicated group of people, and of the people I know within the, you know, county, the ones I, that I know personally are truly dedicated. And that's what I struggle with as to whether this or that. I, I, I think county employee raises is so important. So what, whatever my decision is, just know that I, I am trying to look out for the, the employees.
Oh, I, I, I believe you, to every one of you are.
How come you didn't pick up a shovel in that four hours?
I tried.
I was just going to ask, I was going to ask, did they all have their hard hats on?
Yes, they did. They did. No, they, they did.
I mean, they could have done it that much quicker. I know. It was a state job with him watching.
One, you know, one working, six watching.
You've just said it multiple times, four hours. Over four and a, three and a half days. See?
We good?
Any more questions for Ms. Johnson? Thank you.
Thank you.
You could have gotten it done in three days. All right. Can you pull up the spreadsheet? While she's pulling that up, couple items. What's that? Okay. Reminder, the multi-factor authentication. You need to contact Joe Harris in IT when you're ready to set this up. Although it was set up on a couple of our phones, I don't think it's live yet. So is that correct, Mr. Baines?
I don't think it's live for you guys. It is for some of us.
Okay. So make sure emails on the phones. Ms. Steele says, how often do you have to do it?
Couple hundred a week.
Okay. How often do you have to change your password?
My under or over it all? Over. I guess this case.
It's supposed to be, you should, it's supposed to be, you should change your passwords. When you change the password, you get prompted on all of your.
How often do we have to change our password?
It's different devices, too.
You guys, probably not. Once you get it set up, once you call.
It's when you change devices, like when I, when I go home and I try to access my work email, I have to authenticate.
I haven't had to change.
So then I just don't check my email.
I don't know about these guys. I haven't had to change a password in 11 years. If we've got to change it, this thing will work.
It's going from.
I know.
It's, it's a, it's a simple application that when you open up a web browser, your email will give you a number. The number will ask you to type it into your phone. When it does. When it does, it authenticates for you. That's the latest one.
Oh, it's a Microsoft?
Yes. It's a Micro, Microsoft Authenticator. But that's the latest way. It's changed for me multiple times, but the last time I tried to log on, I was out of town working. That's what it prompted me to do, it gave me a two-digit number, I put it in, and it verified me.
How come it's only when you're traveling do they have to change passwords?
You know, it's, it's always my ninety days are up when I'm not here at the office, and then everything gets hung up and I have to, you know, wait till I get back to the network.
We'll wait till after discussion on the next two items. Okay. So this is where we left off. Tuesday? Wednesday? Wednesday. It ended with day.
Or a Y.
Today, tomorrow doesn't. Tomorrow doesn't.
But Tuesday doesn't.
Mr. Chair can ask, uh, to steal a question.
Absolutely. As long as it's a real question.
It is a real question. When will Davenport be showing up?
I asked Davenport if they were available for both of the May dates, the regular session and the work session, and they are holding both. For us to tell them.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Crisco.
The hundred thousand dollars we used at our last meeting out of the planning budget, is that recurring revenue that we had in there? Or is that a one-time infusion for this? Because if we're looking at that to fund this, is that going to work?
No. And I, it, it would work for one year. That would be it.
But I think, Mr., I think Chris mentioned that perhaps we could pull it out and fund it from the fund balance as a one-time.
Basically where it's coming from anyway.
Yeah, right.
Because if it's only a one-time fund money, even though it's in the general fund, next year it goes away. So if we were to pull that money out to fund this position, then next year, we need the hundred and five thousand to fund that position.
So the, one of the things that we may want to move forward quickly is, would it be worthwhile to make a decision quickly on what we're gonna do with this position? Yes or no?
Yes.
Because we should just make a decision quickly because that will dictate what we do with the rest of the budget. Do you wanna make that decision tonight or just wait until Thursday, let people think about it?
I don't think any, I don't think anybody's decision is going to change. The problem comes in is how are we gonna fund it? Because you don't wanna, we don't wanna have Ms. Johnson go out and get this position, and then next year, we don't have the money. You know, then we have to, to, to make a, a different transition to do this. You know, where, where I stand, you know, I sent you the, the email. The beautiful thing is, this position is, is probably a good position. I think out in the real world, with the number of employees we have, this is probably something that's gonna be contracted. I mean, it was mentioned that New Kent is in the process of having this contracted for the second year to, to meet their needs. My biggest, my bigger issue with it is the fact that at the end of ten years, well, the, the chart that I sent you guys shows about eight hundred. We, we rotate that down to seven hundred thousand dollars after ten years of, of using a consultant for three years, four ti- three times or four times. By doing that, we are now freeing up seven hundred thousand dollars to make the corrections that we're fi- that we find in this. Because that's the other thing, we've done this, I think, three times since I've been on the board. And the biggest hurdle is, how do we fund to fix the deficiencies that are found when we do this? And that's before we get to a COLA, that's before we get to, you know, funding what's wrong. And then on top of that, we have to do the raises, and then we, we try to do it over several years. We do it over several years, we end up, we're back down ten percent lower than everybody else. Because even, even doing it annually in-house and, and making all these changes, I, I think at some point that we're gonna get to that break-even point where we don't have the money to afford to make all the fixes and continue to do the raises that we need to do.
Yeah, if I remember, maybe Ashley, you can joggle my mind. The first time was with Ms. Garten, and we had broken out the two years, in which the first year people got it, and the second year it fell off the block because we didn't have the money. And that was the tough part because, you know, it was the decision by Ms. Garten to fund those, and others fell off the block. But that was the first time that happened, yeah.
And I think with bringing this, you know, in-house in ten years, we spent, already gonna spend a million dollars to fund the position. And that's nothing to do, that's, that's no corrections, that's no market corrections, that's nothing has been done other than having this person do the work, and, and then we have to come at budget time and go, are we gonna raise taxes three cents to fund all of the deficiencies and the raises? Or, you know, what, what's, what's the game we're gonna play?
So let's, let's put this maybe at a rest, but let's say we don't. What's your position on the raises? Because we did talk about that at the last meeting, and to me, that's the more important element. I'm, I'm willing to.
I was never a part of not giving the raises. What, where I stood was, let's guarantee part of it right now, and then the rest as a bonus later. But honestly, at this point in time, what I'm seeing, no. The, the employees are far too important to, to, to think that. If there was gonna be a huge number, then yes, but no. The, the numbers that Ms. Steel shared, they're, they're too small. We have to push forward with everything. Honestly, everything with the budget is right right now. And honestly, I, I would like to have the discussion on this position, probably next year again.
Yeah. So, so what I'm saying is that, how do the rest of the people feel on the position? Because you would need four votes to say no, correct? You guys are two so far, and we haven't heard from the other five.
Mr. Chair, if I could, do a question. Dollar wise, if you kept this hundred and five thousand dollar position, how would that affect raises? Dollar wise?
Well, I think, kinda going back to what Dr. Worth said, first of all, you know, look into revenue again. I would try to, to look there, but I'm not, I'm not, and, and I think Cheryl's even more conservative than I am because, you know, nobody wants to say we're gonna bring in more than we, than we can or we do. But I would look at that, I would look at any other place that, you know, the changes, I'm still waiting to hear what the state's gonna say too. So I, I, I think when you start getting over a hundred thousand, I start really sweating bullets of trying to make it happen. But a hundred thousand is within the, even the county administrator's contingency amount. So not that I wanna cut that because I'm constantly using it, but.
Well, I said, well, I sent you all that article to- today, and I'm a little concerned, I think, just like you are, about what the next three quarters hold. And, you know, we're all very conservative, you know, we are very concerned about taxpayers', you know, citizens' funds. And of course, remembering, we did the reassessment, gotta remember that. You know, my feeling is, I'm tending towards, you know, trying to put this position maybe for next year in discussion, but focus specifically on making sure we get our employees the raises. That's, I've been, I've been battling this, this discussion internally for, for days, and.
What still needs to come out of that hundred thousand?
But it, it can't. That's, that's the, this, these two don't make us whole.
No, but even if, it still needs to come out of that. It needs to come out, you need.
That's, that's absolutely fine, but then we should take.
Even if we take the hundred and five out of line.
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven.
I'd say we just take the hundred out here because it's irrelevant if it's in here or in the unassigned fund balance.
Take that negative out.
Take the negative hundred thousand out.
Because then it can show us exactly where we are, and.
Negative hundred and five.
Right.
Even if, even if we don't fully fund that position this year, we also have the ability that we can have it contingent upon where final revenues and expenditures come out for the year. We can do it and revisit the position August, September.
Fair enough, because.
Whenever the.
Once we know what the state's gonna do, it's.
Well, not even with the state, but once we figure out where our revenues and expenditures are out, and when should you have those, Ms. Bobby? Okay, so we can reevaluate this in September.
By the way, there was other interesting article about the profits that many, many of the major companies that provide food service has, has occurred. And that they're saying that even though inflation may be dropping a little bit, we don't, they don't expect to see food prices drop significantly. Even though these companies, the profits have been phenomenal, and they're, they're, they're not, the money's not going back to the individuals.
It's still a supply chain issue. We're not delivering vegetables.
Well, I said, actually, I'll send you that article. It's, it was an interesting article about, you know, what these companies have made as profit from the individuals over the last year. And they said that one company said, well, if they're doing it, I'm gonna do it. And who, 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 who the people that pay, the cit- the average citizen? And that's not apparently gonna change.
So are we good with the idea of knocking the hundred and five out for right now? But reserving the fact that come September, if revenues and expenditures would offset that amount, that we can reevaluate it then?
Sure.
So let's go back to sixty-seven. And kill that number. Okay. And this is, this budget where it's presented right now is with seven percent for.
Law enforcement. Yes.
Five percent for everyone else. Five percent, we're, we're suggesting the five percent for the schools.
Yes.
And, but we still do not know where the state budget's coming in.
Correct. Two days, but that's not gonna be about that.
No.
I would expect nothing will happen from the state until after the primaries on June the twentieth. Would be my guess, would be the earliest they'll do anything.
So. Let's, let's back up. Where on the budget, is there anything that someone would like to look at on the budget? Any items?
Ms. Chair, I got two comments. Well, first, just regarding this position, I, I do think that Ms. Johnson makes a compelling case for this position, and I would like us to seriously consider funding it if the, the funds come in in September, August timeframe. Because I think, I, I hear what Mr. Crisco, Mr. Bazani are saying about the potential cost savings, and that's, it's a very compelling case. But at the same time, the duration of a consultant is very limited. I think that somebody on the ground here can be more agile to address needs of our county workforce and make some adjustments that, because our, our critical need is retention. We need to retain our employees so that we can provide services for our county. And I think only an in-house employee would be best equipped. I'm sure a consultant can do a good job, but I, I think weighing the two options, she makes a compelling case. So that, that would be my position, that we take a serious look in September at funding the position if the, if the numbers support that. Just regarding the law enforcement issue, I first, I appreciate the support on the ARPA funding for those bonuses. However, I, I am concerned by what Ms. Coway and Mr. Baines mentioned, that this money may be delayed in, as late as December. And there is some urgency regarding these SROs because they are grant-funded positions, and that's, that money's just sitting there. And until these positions are filled, and so the clarification I, I think I need is, I believe the sheriff mentioned that he, he, due to some incoming grant money, he was, could reduce his ask in the budget? And, and so is it possible that maybe he reduces his ask but keeps ten thousand dollars that could be used for two signing bonuses for SROs? Is that something that could be done with the budget?
I think we have that flexibility and more, because I think it's knowing, if, if the county attorney, you know, says, yes, you can use it for that, and it's in the budget, if we are, it's just like grants are reimbursable. A lot of times, you spend the money before the money comes in. So I think we could just, you know, cover it, whether it's through county administrator contingency temporarily, so if, and even under this current year. So I, you know, my intent was after tonight, was to talk to the sheriff and see if he has some thoughts about how to divide up and how he would wanna proceed with it, because like Mr. Crisco brought up the point, you don't wanna turn around and have somebody making more than somebody else. So it, and that would again be one of those times where Elaine is leaned on. But I think we can, we can create and have that happen now based on the resolution that was passed tonight, if it's, you know, if you wanna do it now.
They wouldn't be making more. That would just be a signing bonus that's one time. So technically, they're not making more.
It, it's true. It's just in a year's time, you know? And, and it might be that, again, some people just, you know, have to kinda deal. But we'd wanna look at where does it fit into there.
I just wanna ensure that there would be funds available specifically for those SRO positions until this ARPA money came in. So I just wanted to mention that.
Dr. Worth.
So, you know, we've been hearing from these different departments and having them provide us information on their costs. Of course, one of the, the biggest items in our budget is the schools. And I don't know whether there would need to be any discussion about the school budget, because that's half of our budget. Do we accept the budget as it's been presented to us through Ms. Steel? Or will there be any discussion on any of the specific, specific items that might be relevant to the overall budget? Okay, just wanted to know.
Mr. Hatcher.
Yeah, having been through these numbers time after time, I think we're really close to having a good budget, a balanced budget with the, the pay raises as we've discussed.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I can, I think that the situation with the schools budget, there's two parts that I think are still hanging out there. One, they're gonna discuss tomorrow night at the school board, and that's dealing with the security. They've gotten some initial information. So that's gonna be presented to start talking about, and whether they'll come back to the board and ask for that appropriation for that one-time funding for that. And then, secondly, with what they've done and the superintendent making the budget match to the one point six that's proposed in there, those additional dollars, they're set. They can make it. I think what's gonna end up happening is they're gonna be a lot better off. I, I would be shocked if they don't receive additional state funds, you know, than this mini-budget. So I, I don't think there's anything where they're gonna be in any worse shape. I think they will only be in better shape based on what the state does.
Okay, any more questions on budget tonight, where it sits? Okay. Well, then that brings up the questions I was gonna ask. Right now, we're scheduled to have a meeting on Thursday as a budget work session. That's my question, do we need it?
I don't think we need it.
Okay.
I mean, that's just me.
Mr. Hatcher. I'm going around the table, what do you think?
Well, we're, we're to vote on this budget.
Well, that's the next question.
April seventeenth, right?
That's the next question. Let's go with this question first.
Yeah, well, I wanna jump to that. I wanna have a tough time making that meeting.
Which one, seventeenth?
Seventeenth. So if you wanna delay it or do, vote on it sooner, that would fit me better.
Well, let's go with the fourteenth. Do we wanna have a meeting on the four- thirteenth, excuse me?
I, I don't.
I know you're out of town.
I bet, yeah, but after, after the discussion tonight, I don't, I don't see a need, a need for that meeting.
Do you see a need for the thirteenth?
No.
I don't either. Now, last meeting, we had discussed delaying the budget adoption. Right now, it's scheduled for the seventeenth. Davenport's coming in May. And if we can get them May second, we can have the budget adoption May second. They said they were available both nights.
I agree with that, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna have difficulty on the seventeenth as, as well.
We don't necessarily need them though for the budget adoption, because we don't need them for anything other than the information that we would need in August, by August of eighty-one days prior to the election. Oh, yeah, no, I, I have no problem delaying, but May the second, May the fourth, which, whatever, whatever works for everybody's schedule would be beneficial, because we've typically done it on a non-meeting.
Are you available the eighteenth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Do you, does anybody see any changes to the budget that they foresee? Do you, does anybody see any changes to the budget that they foresee? Between now and the eighteenth, if we were to add to the agenda, we have time for that, correct? That we could have budget adoption on the eighteenth?
So, no more meetings until the eighteenth?
Not yet, Skippy. I think we oughta have it on the thirteenth, just for the heck of it. I mean, if we're gonna be here on Ted's birthday, we're gonna bring you here on the thirteenth.
What day is the veto session, Ms. Steele? I, I'll try to find-
The twelfth?
Twelfth.
The twelfth.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yeah, and for me, the eighteenth would work, but, you know, if we find out information on the twelfth, when they go back for the veto session and they decide, hey, we're gonna come back and work on the budget on the eighteenth, or starting that Monday, then it-
Well, we can, I mean, we can have it on our agenda and we can just amend our agenda when we get here.
Yeah, I think-
So, right now, we'll tentatively have on the agenda for the eighteenth for budget adoption, unless something changes. And Ms. Steele, can you stay up to date on that and notify me, us, so if we need to change that, we will, for that part of the agenda? Or should I just tell Trish so?
Twenty-two.
So, we mentioned, contact Joe to get your stuff set up, we're not having the meeting on the thirteenth, we're not gonna have the meeting on the seventeenth with possible budget adoption on the eighteenth.
That's what happens out in the state.
Yes. And if, and if, right now, if the state is in any kind of, and we'll know better when Keith is here on Thursday, Delegate Hodges is here on Tuesday, rather, should we just, with him coming, cause he, he might not even come up there and watch the negotiation.
He wouldn't be able to come?
Uh-uh.
I think if you wanna keep it for that way for right now, like you said, if, you can always postpone it.
Well, that's what we'll do right now, that's the plan. All right. There's one other item on, oh, go ahead, Mr. Crisco.
I just wanna take a moment and thank my fellow board members for the work that we did this year, I know last year I kinda said, said my piece, cause I didn't think we did enough and I just wanna, wanna thank you guys for all the hard work that we did this year, emails, phone calls, everything that we did to, to make this as easy of a process as we could, I really appreciate it.
That's, in line with that, I think who we need to thank-
Is the staff, Carol, the staff, Cheryl, Maria, just tell me when the, the fish come in. It's all I care about.
What was that, we can't hear you? We need to get her one of those lavalier mics, so when she's sitting back there. Is he here? He can't hear you. All right, one other item on the agenda? All in favor? Meeting adjourned.